Thank you for joining us. This is the 5:30 PM Agenda Review Session. It will begin now, followed immediately by the City Council Meeting for Wednesday, May 5th, 2021. This is a public service announcement. New Jersey Governor Phil Murphy has issued executive orders limiting the size of public gatherings. The City Council will meet today with all voting members of the City Council remotely by telephonic conferencing system. Some city employees will also be available to participate in the same manner.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
Then we have approval of minutes, recorded correspondence by the city clerk, public hearings. We have ordinances on second reading. One, an ordinance to authorize vacation of a portion of Duke Street. Two, an ordinance to adopt the redevelopment plan for the Jersey Handy redevelopment area. Three, an ordinance to adopt the redevelopment plan for the Stanford Remston redevelopment area. Four, a bond ordinance providing for various improvements to the water system in the city of New Brunswick for $16 million. We have no ordinances on first reading. Resolutions 1 through 26, one, approve agenda amendments, two, approve penalty, three, authorize refund for redeemed tax sales certificates. Four, authorize application and acceptance of grants with Middlesex County for the New Brunswick Alliance on Substance Abuse. Five, authorize application and acceptance of grant for the Youth Restart Diversion Program. Six, approve authorization to advertise for the Handy Street main, water mains replacement. Seven, approve emergency temporary appropriations for 2021. Eight, authorize purchase by police department for internet services. Nine, authorized lease of copy machine for the Division of Fire Safety. Ten, authorized lease copy machine for the fire department. Eleven, Housing Authority Board appointment, Barbara Cepeda. Twelve, authorized transfers on several tax and utility accounts. Thirteen, authorized refund due to tax court judgment. Fourteen, approve authorization to advertise French Street, Albany Street, Eastern Avenue, water main replacement. Fifteen, approve amendment of resolution R-71684 with Joe Med Contracting. The final credit. Sixteen, approve amendment of resolution R-22144, additional funds for water utility in the amount of $15,000. Seventeen, approve person-to-person and place-to-place transfer of liquor license. Eighteen, authorize submission and execution of grant agreement for neighborhood preservation program implementation. Nineteen, approve award of contract to Community Asset Preservation Court for affordable multi-housing, multi-family housing development. Twenty, authorize submission of recycling tonnage grant application for 2020. Twenty-one, approve resolution authorizing acceptance and execution of grant agreement and funding in the amount of $4,250. Twenty-two, approve request for street closing and use of city sidewalks. This is for food truck, thank you events, RWJUH caregivers during the COVID-19 crisis. Twenty-three, approve award of contract for a garbage truck. Twenty-four, authorized purchase by Division of Parks and Shade Tree for a lawn mower. Twenty-five, approve award of contract with absolute fire protection. Twenty-six, New Brunswick City Market 2021 budget introduction is tonight. Public hearing will be Wednesday, June 16th, 2021. Items for discussion by council, OEM update, public comments. State to remember, the next Agenda Review Session is Wednesday, May 19th at 5:30 PM, immediately followed by the City Council Meeting. The meeting will come to order. Will the clerk please follow the roll?
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Egan. Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Here.
Council President Socor Ludwig.
Here. Please be advised that the notice requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act have been complied with and satisfied and that the annual notice, which gave sufficient notice of the time, place, and conduct of all public meetings of the Municipal Council of the City of New Brunswick, has been filed with the city clerk, has been placed on an appropriate bulletin board and posted in the bag vestibule of City Hall, visible to the public through the windows in the lobby of City Hall in New Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the City of New Brunswick, namely, the Home News Tribune. Additionally, a 48-hour notice of time, place, and manner of conducting this meeting has been made by the city clerk on May 3rd, 2021, as is required by law.
The City Council intends to meet on a regular schedule and will meet the guidelines for the Open Public Meetings Act by utilizing telephonic conferencing system through which the public may participate. The public is encouraged to call into the conference call-in system through the phone numbers and access codes transmitted in the 48-hour notice. During the portions of the meeting that are not open for public comment, all callers for the public will be muted. During the public comment periods, those who have interest in addressing the council will first be organized by last name and called upon to speak one time and for no longer than five minutes during each public comment portion of the meeting. A timer will chime at the completion of each five-minute period, and the speaker will be notified that their time has expired. Public needing assistance, access, and the call-in numbers should call City Hall at (732) 745-5007.
Please join me in the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now, please join me in a moment of silence to reflect and honor our military personnel and law enforcement officers who dedicate their lives to protect our freedom, safety, and democracy. May God guide them safely in their duties. Thank you.
Will you be accepting minutes from March 2nd?
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Socor Ludwig.
Yes.
Madam Clerk, has the correspondence been directed to the appropriate department?
Yes, Madam President. The correspondence received by the city clerk's office has been forwarded to the appropriate department for further action.
Thank you. We have no public hearings. The first ordinance for discussion is one, an ordinance to authorize vacation of a portion of Duke Street in the city of New Brunswick. We're preparing to open the public hearing on this ordinance only for up to five minutes per person, one time up. Madam Clerk, will you please prepare a list?
Yes, Madam President. If any members of the public wish to speak on this ordinance, please state your name when the appropriate letter of the alphabet is called. A through Z.
Unmuted.
E through H. I through L.
Charlie Cradaville. Luck Sarabianiz.
I'm sorry, can you repeat your name? Is there anyone else? I through L?
Luck Sarabianiz.
Sir, this is for the ordinance only. Okay. M through P.
Danielle Moore.
Okay, Ms. Moore.
Thank you.
Q through T. U, V. W, X, Y, Z. Is there anyone else? A through Z who wishes to address the council on this ordinance?
Um...
Anyone else? A through Z who would like to speak to the council on this ordinance only?
Linda Stork, S-T-O-R-K.
Okay, Ms. Stork. Council President, the first person on the list is Mr. Charlie Cradaville.
Thank you. Mr. Cradaville, can you please state your name, spell your last name, and address for the record?
Charlie Cradaville, K-R-A-T-O-V-I-L. I live on Sedam Street here in the Second Ward of New Brunswick.
Thank you, Mr. Cradaville. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Council President. I see in the ordinance, the proposed sale price for this piece of land is $300,000. I wanted to ask how that figure was arrived at? Was that an offer the city received? Was that a price that the city set? Or was it how it should be done by an appraisal?
I'm going to defer this question to Mr. Sammy. Do you have a response for this?
Yes, I do, Madam Council President. So, just to correct the caller, this is not a fee simple sale. This ordinance actually just vacates the right-of-way, or that portion of Duke Street which people travel on for purposes of vehicular traffic. As far as the compensation amount, what happened was the city tax assessor reviewed assessments for the adjoining properties, and the city arrived at a fair, in their opinion, assessment of what this 9,225 square foot piece of right-of-way vacation would be worth. And that's how we arrived at the $300,000 figure.
Thank you, Mr. Sammy.
Thank you, Mr. Sammy.
Can you tell me, so does this include the little parking island as well as the street? Or is this only the street?
This is only the street. It's only that portion of the roadway of the street.
Okay. Well, as you could imagine, generally, I'm not a fan of selling off public assets, public resources. But I do try to keep an open mind. In this case, I have some serious concerns about this. I want to draw your attention to a report made by the State Commission on Investigation called Dirty Dirt, The Corrupt Recycling of Contaminated Soil and Debris. And you could imagine my surprise to see and hear reference to New Brunswick. I want to point out, the company that wants to take over this land is called Recon Services. They've built a couple of projects in the neighborhood, specifically one at 55 Morel Street. And apparently, they got tied up in this State Commission of Investigation matter for where the dirt was dumped from that project. And they were apparently involved with a man named Bradley Serkin, a convicted felon with ties to organized crime. And from the report, it says, quote, "In another instance, PAH tainted debris from a construction project in New Brunswick was dumped at Jersey Recycling after Serkin provided the truck and company that went to haul it with a notarized letter stating that lab tests had determined the material to be residential-grade and thus suitable for delivery to the Palmyra site." And so, you know, what ended up happening was, you know, dirty contaminated dirt was, you know, brought to a site that wasn't equipped to handle it, and it was potentially distributed from there to people. And, you know, that's not okay. I attended the zoning board meetings on this matter. The environmental impact statement had errors and was extremely brief. I'm talking, you know, less than a page. And so, really, my concern is that the environmental aspect is not being paid enough attention to. This site is, of course, a site of a former auto repair place and a filling station, so there's considerable likelihood that there are contaminants in the dirt. And I've never gotten any assurance that anything's going to be done properly about it. Making matters worse, when I brought this matter up to the council several years ago, I, you know, one of our people at New Brunswick, they received a threatening phone call the following day from Mr. Jerry Bazone claiming to be with Recon Services, saying that he wanted to know where our office was so that he could, quote, "choke me out." And, you know, I'm not okay with that either. So, given all of these, you know, facts in concert, as well as the fact that Duke Street is a fine street and doesn't need to be sold, it doesn't need to, you don't need to get rid of it. In fact, this developer could come up with a plan to build on the existing private property that they've already acquired instead of impinging upon the public land that all of us own. I would encourage you to reject this ordinance. This is a...
Thank you, Mr. Cradaville. Your time has expired.
Council President, the next person on the list is Mr. Luck Sarabianiz, who is actually one of the applicants for ANI-RAMEN. So, I would ask Mr. Luck, unless you are looking to speak on this ordinance, can you please hold any comments until we act on the resolution?
Copy. No comments.
All right. Thank you. Council President, the next person on the list is Ms. Danielle Moore.
Thank you. Ms. Moore, can you please state your name, spell your last name, and your address for the record?
Danielle Moore, M-O-O-O-R-E, Somerset Street. Yes, first of all, before I do, before I do to ask my question, please, may I ask why the clerk asked to stop the gentleman from speaking on this, this ordinance?
That has nothing to do with it.
Until after the...
You can comment on this ordinance, Paula.
Well, well, thank you. This is, well, if you let me finish as usual, I will continue. This is regarding this ordinance. I'm still asking why on this ordinance did the clerk tell the gentleman, "Please do not," to hold his comments, or what he was going to speak against on this ordinance?
She did not ask him to hold his comments. I'm going to answer you if you give me a moment. She did not ask him to hold his comments on this ordinance in particular, but the man has a piece of business with a resolution that's coming up later. And she said if his comments had to do with the resolution, if he would please do it later during the appropriate part of the meeting. If not, he was able to speak. He chose to do it during the appropriate part of the meeting.
Okay. Thank you for the correcting then.
You're welcome.
Well, I was, even though, like I said, I know most of the council members, like I said, always just say yes, yes, yes before investigating. But I will say, thank you to Mr. Charlie Cradaville for all the information that he is giving on this ordinance. And wow, I say that the city should, I pray that you do look into selling this and then do an investigation after all the information you receive from Mr. Cradaville. Like I said, where, and for you to come up with a price of $300,000 just from the city, where I say something to be do by a licensed appraiser due to where they'll tell you the real words, because honestly, I would never trust the city of many scams and lies that they have told. No trust. Where I just hope you just take the time before you really just keep saying yes, yes, on everything. Please look into Mr. Cradaville is really saying on this property. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore.
Madam President, the next person on the list is Ms. Linda Stork.
Thank you. Ms. Stork, can you please state your name, spell your last name, and give your address for the record?
Yes, Linda Stork, South Park Boulevard. So, my concern, apart from the fact that I don't think we should be doing business with this company, but what, how does this affect the people that live in those houses on that part of Duke Street? When you say you're going to vacate the street, but there is no more, that part of Duke Street will not exist?
It won't be open for a public right of way.
So, how are the people supposed to get to their houses that live on that part of Duke Street?
The people that live there now with their houses, if they're still living in there, they can get to their streets or not? Right? That's correct, Mr. Sammy, right?
Madam Council President, just for clarification, the portion that will be vacated, okay, abuts properties that are going to be demolished in part of this project. So, those people will not lose access because those houses conceivably will no longer exist, and the new building will be on that footprint. It only affects, like I said, 9,225 square feet. The other areas of Duke Street where there are residences and businesses that aren't affected by this development will have free access to their properties on Duke Street.
Oh. Thank you.
So, do the people that live on that end of Duke Street, do they know their houses are being acquired?
That's separate from this ordinance.
I didn't, I didn't hear the answer to my question. Do they, are they aware that their houses are slated to be demolished?
That's separate from this ordinance. This is strictly for the vacation of that piece of property.
Well, yeah, but if you're not going to, if the houses aren't going to be demolished, you can't take away their street. They would have to be able to get to their houses. Has it already been decided that the houses are being...
Madam Chairman, Madam Chairman, the houses are part of the project already. They already own the houses.
Yeah.
That's correct.
They're developing the project. Thank you.
That's correct, Mr. Egan.
So, everything's approved already except for the street?
Correct. And just for the benefit of the council, this was a condition of the board when the project was approved, that this little portion be vacated for this particular project and for, I suspect, better traffic flow in that area.
Oh, so in effect, it's already been promised that this would happen?
No promises, just the condition.
It was a condition of approval.
So, if it didn't get vacated, then it wouldn't be approved? Is that right?
Well, it could change, it could change the deal. It could potentially change the project.
And the project, I'm sorry, I had to go out and come back in again? I missed, what, is the project housing?
Yeah.
Like, affordable housing? I don't believe so. I'm not, I, I don't believe it's affordable housing. All right, that's all, that's all the questions that I had.
Council President, there are no members of the public on the list.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council Vice President Escobar.
Yes.
Council President Socor Ludwig.
Yes.
Next, we have an ordinance to adopt the redevelopment plan for the Jersey Handy redevelopment area in the city of New Brunswick. At this time, we're preparing to open the public hearing on this ordinance only for up to five minutes per person, one time up. Madam Clerk, will you please prepare a list?
Yes, Madam President. If any members of the public wish to speak on this ordinance, please state your name when the appropriate letter of the alphabet is called.
Unmuted.
E through H. I through L.
Charlie Cradaville.
M through P.
Danielle Moore.
Q through T.
Linda Stork.
Q through Z. Is there anyone else? A through Z who wishes to address the council on this ordinance only? This is the last call, A through Z, if you wish to speak on this ordinance. Council President, the first person on the list is Mr. Charlie Cradaville.
Muted. Thank you, Mr. Cradaville. The floor is yours.
Yes, good evening once again. Charles Cradaville, New Brunswick. I spoke to you about this at the planning board meeting where you referred this to yourself on the council. And I, you know, wanted to clarify for the record which agency is going to be in charge of redevelopment for this? Is it going to be the Improvement Authority, like, you know, is, of course, handling the matter of the new school? Or is it going to go back to the way it was and the Housing Authority will be in charge?
I was under the impression that it's the Housing Authority, but Mr. Dominguez, can you clarify that for me?
Certainly, Madam Chair. As per when it was brought up at the Planning Board Hearing, there was a decision made to modify the plan, and that's in the, in the letter with the, with the plan, that we would change it so that the school would continue to be a MCIA project, but that all other redevelopment projects in this redevelopment plan area would revert and/or continue to be part of designation by the Housing Authority.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, it's a very confusing situation, having, you know, some parts of the redevelopment area under one jurisdiction and other parts under another. And I still haven't figured out why we ever got the Middlesex County Improvement Authority involved in this site. But, you know, I will, you know, say that this area does need a school, and I hope that the school gets built quickly, but also in a way that protects the students from the significant environmental contamination that's present at this site. Can anyone give me an update on the sources of contamination and, you know, the actions that have been taken to address them?
I don't have any of that information available to me right now, and I don't see how this pertains to this redevelopment plan.
On the ordinance.
I don't see how it doesn't apply. You're talking about building a school here and other things as well, right?
The school is part of the redevelopment area. This is the plan for redevelopment. This has nothing to do with structures or building at this point. This is just a redevelopment plan.
So, wait, there's not, there's not going to be any additional development?
No, there is. You know that. You know that there was a project that was approved.
Okay, so it does have to do with development and structures. So, so I'm asking about the contamination there because...
If you have questions about the school, you can ask the board about them.
Okay. Thanks for that. How about the contamination? I'm very interested in the status of remediating the contaminants at the site. Can you tell me anything about that before you approve this redevelopment plan? Or do you not know anything about it?
Whoever's doing the development at any of these areas would be responsible for the remediation. And you know, and you know very well that anything is contingent upon state approval when it comes to contamination.
Sure, sure. But I also know that Jack Morris had gotten in trouble before for the same kind of thing I was talking about on the last ordinance, improper disposal of contaminated dirt. So, I want to know, since this is Jack Morris's land, his company, Edgewood Properties, and they're probably going to be the ones doing the developments, I want to know what contaminants are there and what the dangers are and what's being done to mitigate those dangers and protect the public. And I think that you should want to know the same thing, being an elected official for this city. And I think that, having discussed this specific redevelopment area so many times over the past year, and people begging you to educate yourself about this site and the contamination issues there, by now, you should have some answers. And I'm appalled, quite frankly, that still, after these many months, you don't know the contaminants that are there or what's being done about it. And that's, am I correct? You don't know anything about the contamination problem there?
If I, if I read, if I read a report, Mr. Cradaville, that names so many contaminants with their scientific names, all that matters to me, I mean, I care about that. I don't want anybody getting hurt. But I also know that there's a state agency that takes care of all that, and you have to abide by all their standards and guidelines before you can build anything. That is the protection that is out there for the people. Thank you.
Council President, the next person on the list is Ms. Danielle Moore.
Thank you. Ms. Moore, the floor is yours.
Well, first thing, I would like to speak on this ordinance, where I know a lot of times, Ms. Ludwig, that you always say, "You have nothing to do with this. You have nothing to do with this. You have every piece of doing to this due to where you're working with the planning board and you're with the city council." Basically, so you have twice as much to do with this, whereas how last time, you got the last word.
Do you have any, Ms. Moore, do you have any comment on the Jersey Handy redevelopment ordinance?
Yes, I am, please. Yes, I will. This is about this and how you keep saying that you have nothing to do this, you don't know this, where you're the one that signed the papers to have this done, the task is to be done. So you, you, it's all about you, where you keep saying that, oh, I don't know this, I don't know this, where, like, like Mr. Cradaville said, you had all the time.
Do you have a, do you have a comment? If you have a comment relating to the Jersey Handy redevelopment ordinance before you tonight?
Yes, I, yes, I do, due to where, like I said, this is not.
Well, make it into your point.
Please stop interrupting, maybe I will. And due, due to where, like I said, what is part of this redevelopment? What is this, this about the school or, or continuing down Jersey Avenue where I know more, part of, they were talking about knocking that down as well. So is this just with the school being redeveloped or other things that are going to be repaired to, to try to make it look good where the school is going?
This is from Handy Street. This is bordered by Handy, Jersey, and Stamford in that area there in that overlay zone.
So is it, is all of that property going to go towards the school?
No.
So, so basically, we're just talking about the area of the school then?
No, we're talking about the area between Handy, the railroad tracks, Stamford, and Jersey Avenue.
So what's to be repaired then? What's to be redeveloped?
I don't know. They are taking out a light industrial area and they're, they're changing a couple things to make it a more suitable location for urban revitalization and the safety of the school so there's no.
So who's paying, who's paying for it? Who's paying for all of this? Is this part of the school? Who's paying for it?
This is not part of the school, Ms. Moore.
The private developer is holding the property.
Yeah, this is not part of the school. This is, this is about the entire area.
Yes, I know, but answer my question. Please answer my question. Okay, I understand, I got you now, it's not part of the school, but who's paying for this to be done?
Whoever, whoever developed it, whoever the private developer is.
Because now it all makes sense. I was wondering what was going on on, on Jersey Avenue the past few days with them putting up all these new poles for Verizon, for the wireless. Now I understand what's going on due to where I was wondering why all these. Soon as you.